Waiting for Cory.
See, they can vary power. Starting from some other cities. We want it, we want here, so they, so now they're thinking about the.
Well, I don't know that. Should we give her a call? I don't know.
Cory? Remote.
Um, one of those guys, one of those guys might be, I'm not sure. No, we don't have anybody from.
Bill? Bill? Should I announce that, you know, either? The close.
How close are you?
He is.
Okay. Oh, okay.
An abundance of caution.
Well, did Bill give you the okay? Well, let's just give him a minute or two.
Go ahead. I thought Rob texted.
I think he did. All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting in City Campbell Planning Commission of August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Then we have a roll call. Commissioner Fields.
Present.
Commissioner Majewski, absent. Commissioner Stojewski, absent. Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Buckbinder.
Present.
Flasher Camp Carlin.
Present.
Chair Sizer. Present. Okay. Uh, my name is Alan Zuster. I'm the chair of the Planning Commission. Um, so let's, uh, has anybody had a chance to review the minutes? Anybody got any changes, corrections? Anybody? Anybody? Okay.
Very thorough.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay.
As included in the agenda.
Do I, do I have a second? Second? Please.
Second.
We have a vote? Commissioner Field.
Aye.
Commissioner Gray.
Atstain.
Commissioner Buckbinder.
Aye.
Flasher Camp Carlin.
Aye.
Chair Sizer.
Aye.
Okay, that's, uh, noon surpassed. Uh, okay, this is the point in the meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. You may speak up to five minutes, but the planning commission may not take any action today. Is there anybody who would like to speak either in the chamber or online on a non-agenda item? Anybody? Okay, well, I'll, I'll close the oral requests. I was supposed to open them, but I pretend like I did it. Um, before we start on our, our regular agenda item, uh, I want to provide some information on how we'll be conducting the meeting. For each item, for each item, I'll first announce, tonight's we only have one item. Uh, I'll first announce the item and then ask for a staff presentation, after which the commissioners may have some questions for staff. After that, we will open the public hearing and, and ask the applicant to speak if they're here and wish to speak, followed by any other members of the public. We'll first have any public speakers physically present speak and then anyone attending via Zoom. Members of the planning commission may have questions for the applicant or any of the public speakers. Once we've received all public testimony, we'll close the public hearing and the commission will then have discussion and a motion and decis- decision based on the nature of the item. Um, before we start on the items, commissioners, do you have any disclosures regarding the item tonight?
I did visit the site.
Anybody else?
I may have gone by the site at some point, but not specifically here.
Commissioner Cantor?
Same as Commissioner Buckbinder, I may have asked by it, but not his core.
I, I did, I did stop at the site and looked at it from the street. Um, okay. So let's begin with the, with the first item. Item number two on the agenda, sixty seven Sunnyside Avenue Historic Recision. Uh, public hearing to consider the request of Glenn Kinsey to remove a structure of merit from the historic resource inventory, commonly known as the Emile and Mae Fritz House. On property located in sixty seven Sunnyside Avenue, the application under consideration includes a historic rescission file number PLN two oh two three dash one seventy. Staff is recommending that this project be deemed categorically exempt under SEQA. Uh, there's a tentative city council meeting on September seventeenth. The project planner is Larissa Wellman. Larissa.
Thank you so much. Um, the project site is currently developed with one and a half, with a one and a half story single family dwelling. The dwelling was constructed around nineteen oh six in the folk Victorian style, which is a simpler, a simple derivative of the Queen Anne Cottage style, which is significant in Campbell. Uh, previously, the property served as multifamily housing with three units, including two, which were converted from the raised crawl space, but today it functions as a single family dwelling. Uh, the city of Campbell conducted a historic resource survey, uh, in nineteen seventy seven identifying, identifying four hundred and sixty seven properties, which included sixty seven Sunnyside Avenue as potentially, uh, historically significant. Uh, Campbell adopted its first historic preservation ordinance, establishing criteria for designating historic resources. Sixty seven Sunnyside was officially listed on the historic resource inventory in nineteen fourteen, uh, nineteen eighty four, following the adoption of this ordinance. Uh, it was listed, uh, as significant for its Queen Anne Cottage architectural style and its historic ties to the Kennedy family. The property remains on the HRI since then and has not changed. Uh, I should say the status has not changed. Uh, the historic significance of the property is broken down into two concepts. The first is the architectural significance. Uh, it is architecturally significant, uh, because it was designed in the folk Victorian style, which, as I mentioned, is a more rudimentary offshoot of the Queen Anne Cottage style, which does hold significance in Campbell and is identified in the, uh, city's, uh, residential, uh, historic design guidelines. Uh, this, uh, design of the folk Victorian style also reflected the era of the time, uh, which is marked for the emergence of simplified versions of popular architectural styles. Uh, as you'll note from the photographs on the slide, uh, some of the key design features include a cutaway bay window, original wood trim, an ornament, ornately detailed door and a dominant front single story porch. Uh, the property also holds, uh, as noted on the original form, uh, the, some significant, uh, historic significance due to the heritage of the site. Uh, the, uh, property dates back to its original land grant, uh, which helped play a crucial role in the early development of Santa Clara Valley, including shaping the growth of Campbell. In eighteen eighty one, the Kennedy family acquired the property, moving there with their children to establish a farm. Uh, the Kenny family was a cornerstone of early Campbell developments and the current property was created through a subdivision of this original farm. Uh, the subdivision is emblematic of the broader transformation of the area as large farms were subdivided to accommodate huge population growth at the time. Use and community development, uh, during this period in the Santa Clara Valley. The applicant today is requesting a rescission of the property from the city's HRI. Uh, this applicant, uh, this action would, uh, remove any historic significance of the property and it would no longer be reviewed in the context of the historic preservation ordinance and would be ineligible for future Mills Act applications or contracts. The, uh, application, um, has, the project has undergone two different, uh, historic, uh, evaluations by two different, uh, architectural firms. And both historic evaluations have concluded that the house has, um, undergone extensive changes since its original construction, most notably a front porch remodel in the nineteen twenties. Uh, the front porch was remodeled again by the current owner, which included installation of vinyl casement windows, replacement of the front door. Uh, and he filled in what was previously a screen corridor, uh, to make a more flush facade. Additional alterations are noted on the table on the slide. Uh, and of note, the original wood windows have been replaced with vinyl and some extensive interior modifications have further obscured the house's original form and impacted the historic integrity. Uh, furthermore, in the evaluations, the, uh, historic consultants evaluated the historic connections to people important in Campbell's history. Uh, while the property's association with the Kennedy family was deemed significant in nineteen eighty four, further research, research by the Sandoval evaluation reveals that, uh, the Fritz's, who were the original owners, uh, were only related through marriage. And this was not deemed significant, uh, in Campbell's history. And while the house does reflect early residential patterns near downtown Campbell, it does not meet the criteria for historic designation due to its lack of association with any pivotal, pivotal events or notable individuals. Uh, the planning commission should therefore review, uh, the criteria on the screen for designating a structure of merit to decide whether the building still meets the standards. If the building no longer meets the standards as listed on screen, uh, it does not meet the minimum requirements to be considered a structure of merit here in the city of Campbell. Uh, added to June twenty sixth hearing, after thorough discussion and testimony, the, uh, uh, HPB decided to deny the request or they voted to deny the request to remove sixty seven Sunnyside from the HRI. Uh, at this meeting, the board emphasized the importance of maintaining the historic and architectural integrity of the property as part of Campbell's broader preservation efforts. Although the property is not of the highest architectural tier, as noted by the evaluations, it is still, uh, the board determined it was still valued for its representation of Campbell's working class heritage and its distinctive folk Victorian style. The discussion acknowledged that past alterations, like the nineteen twenties porch modification, have not diminished the historic values, uh, but instead enhanced the narrative of the building's evolution through time. The property is seen as an example of a si- of simplified architectural trends during a period of rapid city expansion, making it a significant piece of the city's historical context. And furthermore, the HPB determined that the property does align with the hit, with the city's historic, uh, design guidelines for residential buildings, the overall general plan, and supported its continued recognition as a structure of merit. Um, however, given the consultant's determinate, uh, determination that alterations to the property do diminish its architectural significance and that the connections to notable historic figures are of lesser importance, staff does recommend that the planning commission, uh, adopts a resolution recommending that the city council approves a historic rescission request. Uh, this concludes my presentation and I can now take questions at this time. Uh, the applicant is present here in the audience and can take questions. And the historic consultant, Mark Sandoval, who prepared one of the reports, is also online and available for questions.
Okay. Larissa, thank you. That was very, uh, comprehensive report. We appreciate it. Commissioner Buckbinder.
Given that staff seems to make a very clear recommendation on this, was the historic preservation boards vote unanimous or contentious?
Um, the historic, unfortunately, two members of the historic preservation board were absent. Um, the item was also continued twice. Uh, so the first meeting, uh, was mostly discussion. The second meeting, as, uh, listed in the staff report, was a two one vote to deny. And then the final meeting, uh, there was a unanimous vote between the three present board members, so it was a three zero vote to deny the request and to prepare an alternate resolution.
Uh, so the staff prepared a resolution to approve the recision. They said, bring us back another one on the last and they go to accept that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not clear on that. So it went two one and then it went three oh and the three oh, the reason that we had another vote again?
No, um, so the historic preservation board is, uh, made up of five members. Two were absent, so the, the three remaining members, uh, at the second meeting, two voted to, uh, deny the request, one voted to approve. At the third meeting, when the resolution was prepared, when the alt, uh, the alternate resolution was prepared and the staff report was prepared, uh, the person who had previously voted yes switched their vote to deny, so it was a unanimous vote at the third meeting to deny the request by the historic, by the remaining historic preservation board members.
Okay. Mike?
Uh, yeah, a couple of questions. Yeah, thanks for that report, but I, so, so the, uh, the staff, the planning staff, and it was your recommendations both times. You pretty much went with the consultant Sandoval's, uh, kind of looked at it and, and agreed with his findings both times.
Uh, that's, that's correct.
Basically, and yeah, just trying to get the idea.
That's correct. Um, the findings in the report, uh, influenced staff, the staff recommendation to, uh, approve the, uh, to recommend approval of the rescission.
Okay. Yeah, that's just, uh, the project, are all, uh, historic resource inventory structures, are they all structures of merit?
Uh, no, uh, there are multiple different categories, uh, historic tiers.
Oh, okay. Is, is structure of merit the lowest tier for an HRI?
Um.
Just wondering.
There is also inclusion within a historic district. So a property within a historic district might not of, in itself be historic, but due to inclusion in a district, it might be more historic.
Yeah, I don't want to get too much into the reason. You, you, I, I didn't see this in the, do you know how many of those original hundred and fifty seven structures that were put on the HRI? How many are still on that? Was that on the report anywhere?
No, that's a good question. I can get you that information right now, though. If you want to take some other questions, I'll put it up there.
Oh, my, I, I got two more questions. And this has come, well, this came up in our last, we had an item on this, the twenty twenty two, that El Patio.
Yes.
And, and I'm not, I'm not picking on the current, this current, uh, project, because I know the consultants said most of the, the renovation was done in the nineteen twenties, nineteen forties. Uh, but there was some work, I guess, more recent. And then the El Patio, the, uh, project, there was also had been sufficient, uh, substantial renovations made that, that obviated the historic. So apparently, oh, the city does not, so if that happens, what happens to the, to the, or anything to the structure? I guess there's nothing in their code that.
Yes.
Does anything.
It's, it's a little unclear now. That is hoping to be resolved as part of a future, uh, ordinance update. Um.
Okay, yeah, because it seemed like nothing, you know, there's no ramifications and I don't know if there should be, but I, it just seems like, what's the sense of even having it? Anybody can do whatever they want and then they say, well, it's not historic anymore because we did this. Uh, did you get that answer?
Yes, actually, our current inventory has one hundred and forty four structures. Some were added on, some were removed, so it's not quite the same.
So it's apples and apples, okay. My formal question is because, uh, just, just came to me when it reported on the, uh, the historic reservation board. They said, yeah, they, they pointed out this distinctive folk Victorian style. And I know, I know folk Victorian things from your report, but do we know how many other structures in Campbell are folk Victorian?
Uh, without doing a.
I didn't see that in the report. I just was wondering. Okay.
I was doing a review of.
Okay, that's fine. Start at X. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the report. Uh, broadest possible question. Why did the historic preservation board recommendations go to us and then to council? I, I kind of get it with Sark, because it's a subcommittee of this, but why is this coming to us?
It's, it's a good question. Um, it kind of follows the designation process. Uh, so, eh, when the original historic preservation ordinance was adopted, eh, projects, uh, the historic preservation board didn't have much decision-making ability. So they would go first to the historic preservation board, uh, for review, then to the planning commission, uh, for further review and then to the city council for, uh, for decision. And so that process has since carried on for the designation and so it's, could be concluded that the reverse of that or the inverse of that would follow a similar process.
So I'll, I'll just add community development director's perspective. It is a bit unusual to observing how other cities do this. Historic committee whose subject matter expertise is historic to have a, I'll just say a redundancy of the planning commission. So I, I know it's on a work plan to come back to historic preservation ordinance. I think we'll tee up the question if a planning commission review is necessary at that time, of course. Pull, pull planning mission members during that process to see if it's about.
Okay. Um. If you are on the list, what are you prevented to doing? You could make high level, just like if you, if you, if this property remained on the list, what is the net of that?
Um.
Like, if they can't tear it down and build a new one, they can't add a third floor or front house, like what, what does that mean?
Uh, I guess it depends on the level of, uh, significance. So for a structure of merit, uh, for residential building, uh, we do require, we do have their historic preservation ordinance, which specifies a, a particular process for construction, alterations, demolition. Um, it, you have to follow the crit, the designated criteria for a historic building, uh, under the, the city's guidelines that were adopted in two thousand and six, uh, that some can somewhat limit, uh, uh, alteration ability, um, although this, uh, the design guidelines does provide a path forward and, uh, allows for different types of alterations, additions, et cetera. Uh, demolition, uh, of a historic resource can be seen as, um, uh, as a violation of a SEQA action, so there would be additional, uh, review involved in order to prove that. So generally demolition is, is not allowed unless, um, in this case, the property is determined not to be historic.
Got it. Okay, very helpful. Um. If in the ori- when this was originally cited to be a historic home, if at the time they had known it was the Fritz's, not the Kennedys, do you think they would have added it to the list? I know that's.
That's, that's pretty speculative.
It's, it's difficult to say. The original survey does note that, um, they are, there's a note on the original nineteen seventy seven survey, which is included as an attachment in the staff report of, it says possible relation to the Kennedys. So it doesn't seem at that time, it was a clear, they had a clear idea, or maybe it was just flagged and then additional information came to light that wasn't disclosed in the survey, um, that, uh, continued to have the house, uh, be reviewed for potential inclusion on the HRI. So it is difficult to say, but it did seem at the time of the nineteen seventy seven survey, um, that the, uh, subcommittee that conducted the survey, uh, did, uh, acknowledge that the Fritz's were related to the Kennedys and not direct descendants of the Kennedys.
Got it. Uh, okay, and last question. In, when this was done, could the homeowner have opted out at that point?
Yes, so the previous methodology was an opt-out, uh, method, as opposed to today, we currently have an opt-in, uh, methodology. Um, and so at the time, uh, the homeowners who were on, who were surveyed had the ability to opt out if they attended a public hearing and requested not to be included. Uh, as part of the, uh, staff report that I sent to you, uh, we did, uh, find the original letter that was sent out to this homeowner uh, and which included the address of the homeowner. So we did, uh, find that the original homeowner in nineteen eighty three was, did receive, um, a notice to attend the meeting and could have opted out if that was the desire.
Got it. Very helpful. Thank you so much.
So, but just to be clear, they got, the, we know that mail was sent to them, not that they opened it or that they responded or thought about it in any way, but city did its diligence and they may have just, they, they made no motion or acknowledgement or any indication they were aware of it, you know?
That's correct.
Okay. Same thing that happened the, the last time in twenty twenty one, I think.
They said we were talking about the previous owner than the owner now.
Yes.
Yeah. Anything else? Oh, Commissioner Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so following, uh, Commissioner Buckbinder's questioning, uh, we don't have a list of attendees of that public meeting, okay, so. Okay, so, um, if we can go back and, uh, I'm still unclear. Uh, do all historic preservation items get two votes? I mean, my thinking is if they took a vote and it was two to one, you know, that means it didn't pass. Why, why was there a second vote?
Um, the reason that there were two votes, uh, for the HPB meeting was that staff did not prepare a resolution to deny the app, uh, the request. So the, uh, meeting had to be continued to a, a future date so that staff could prepare an alter- alternative, alternative resolution, which, uh, listed findings that supported the denial of the request to remove the property from the historic resource inventory. And so at that later meeting, uh, the vote, uh, configuration changed and became a three zero instead of a two one.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
So they had voted out a resolution that wasn't the resolution that, the proper resolution.
Correct.
Well, maybe they, they, they maybe had, shouldn't have devoted, right? I mean, it's like, how did the vote happen?
Well, maybe they, they, maybe had, shouldn't have voted, right? I mean, it's like, how did the vote happen?
Um, under Robert's Rules of Order, if you have a quorum, all you need is a majority of a quorum to pass a motion.
Right.
Quorum for the H P B is three members, three out of five. So a two to one is a majority vote, which passes, uh, the motion.
But I guess what we're asking about the fact that you had to come back with another resolution.
Correct.
But, but the two to one and the three oh was for the same thing, for, 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 um, denial of the rescission, right?
Correct.
It was, it was the same.
The first vote was for the motion to have staff prepare an alternate resolution to deny the project, and the, and the, the three oh was voting on that resolution that was prepared.
Because they came in, and originally you were saying approve this, and they said, no. Please go give us a different motion. That, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
I don't know if it confuses the issue, but they were also different members voting. It's in, it's all in the report.
Yeah, it was the same members, the same crew. So it was the three.
I don't think so. I think the original vote was two to one, and there was one man who was absent, that had the three oh vote.
As, as somebody, just to clarify, someone that was clerking that meeting, it was the same members.
Really? Okay, I, I take it back.
Matt, do you have any more?
Yes, I do. Um, so, uh, I'm not a real estate agent or expert, but I believe when you buy property, when you, you know, where you check with the city and you look at the zoning and doing those so-called due diligence activities, you find out if something is historic or not, or listed as historic, correct? When somebody calls you, says, I'm interested in buying this property, you know, can you tell me zoning and whatever, you, you would not disclose if it's historic or not?
Uh, if someone were to ask me about, uh, the zoning of the property, I would just disclose that information, uh, which has information on zoning, their historic significance, um.
Structure of merit shows up, you know, in.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Um, okay, so, um, you know, okay, so, thank you for that answer. The other is, as I'm looking at the chronological order of ownership, seems like, um, seems like the Fritz family owned it back in nineteen ten, or Emil Fritz, I should say. This is on the beginning of your page twenty-five of the, actually not page twenty-five, on the beginning of page fifty-six of the staff report. Uh, at the very bottom, it says ownership slash occupancy history. And it shows Emil Fritz as the owner in nineteen oh five to nineteen twenty. Do, do you see that?
I'm pulling it up.
Okay.
So what's the question?
The question is, it seems like, um, it seems like one of the owners came back and bought the property, like many, many years later, or descended. Uh, I guess it's Kinsey, um, is it Kinsey?
Uh, Kinsey is the current owner of the property.
So, so, so the list I was looking at, uh, it's, it's on top of page fifty-six, or page twenty-five, or fifty-six of the report. The very top, it talks about the construction chronology. Do you see that on here?
I'm pulling it up.
Okay. Um, it seems like Emil Fritz. Um.
He bought the land and built it.
Bought it, okay, house constructed. I don't know why, why I thought they came back and repurchased it or re- reoccupied it, you know, maybe, maybe I was, uh, con- confusing two different last things. Yeah, there. Okay, uh, you know what? Never mind, you know, let me continue the rest and then.
All right. Okay, um, so just, just to clarify the point that, uh, Commissioner Cantor, I mean, and we get, we, uh, if the applicant, if the applicant is here, we can ask, uh, him or heard the question, the question about, because in the, in the report, you talk about that they didn't seem to be aware of it at the time they purchased, okay, that they weren't made aware of it. And so the one other we, we, we saw, uh, a year or two ago was, is kind of the same thing. They, they, they suggested that they weren't aware of it. So, but, but they, uh, there's no, it is kind of, I assume it's kind of contingent on the real estate agent to check this stuff and, and, and I don't know if you know the process, but one would think that the, the real estate agent is the one that's going to be responsible to inform the potential buyer that there's this designation on this particular house. Does that make sense?
Yes, we, it is, when you buy a property, you have to zone. Real estate agents, or agents of any property, should disclose the zoning and restrictions into that zoning. I will say we are looking at the ability to record on property, perhaps historic notices as a second level that would show up on title, if folks own a historic property. At least it flags that. I've heard from at least three customers now that have bought properties and stated to the planners after preparing plans that they didn't know is historic. So any measure to let prospective buyers know they have a historic property to work on.
Okay, good. Um, the, the other thing was that, um, the present owner, somewhere in here, they did some changes. They added, I don't know where, where it is, but there, there was a chart that the most recent owners added the garage, added a back deck, and did some bal- balustrade changes. I, I'm not sure what the balustrades are. Is that, is that on a facade?
Uh, the railings.
The railings. Okay, now, if they had known it was historical, okay, would those, any of those changes that they had made have had to be approved by the city?
It really depends. Um, the Historic Preservation Ordinance, uh, when it was adopted in nineteen eighty-three did require that any changes to historic property be approved through a conditional use permit that was approved by the Planning Commission. However, the extent to which that was actually conducted for, uh, these rudimentary or routine updates to properties, uh, the, um, the historic timeline that we have doesn't show that many of the historic properties, especially these smaller structures of merit, uh, went through the conditional use permit process. It could have been a just common practice of the city at the time. Uh, it wasn't until the Historic Preservation Ordinance was updated again, uh, in two thousand and four, that provided a very specific path forward for how to approve, uh, any alterations to a, uh, to a historic, uh, uh, resource. So it's difficult to say if it would have been, if the planning commission, or the planning, uh, division would have required, um, the owner to get a conditional use permit to, to update the railings.
So there was something new that happened in two thousand and four?
Two thousand and four, and then also in two thousand and six, the city adopted the Residential Design Guidelines for Historic Structures, which specified what the actual, uh, 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 significant features of a property would be, and what would be the important parts of the homes to preserve, which gave more framework, uh, for property owners and for the city to determine what was significant to the house and when, um, those alterations could be made and what would the process would be.
Okay, so, I don't know if you know this, but based on the fact that there were adjustments made in two thousand and four, two thousand and six, do we know whether or not the owners of the, on the list were notified formally by the city?
I, I don't have that information, um, but they are here in the audience, since you want to ask them questions about.
I'm just thinking in general, whether the entire list, there was a notification put out to the list that says, hey, we've made these changes, and it, it could affect you.
I, I haven't come across anything in the record that property owners were notified, uh, with every change to the ordinance. Um, however, it could, the city could have notified property owners. I just, I don't have the, uh, I, I wasn't, I did not come across.
And do, and, and, uh, do you know, I could also ask the applicant, the changes that they made, the, the most recent owner, do we know when those were done? Early in their ownership or later? We don't know?
No, it's difficult to say, and the historic evaluations echo that, uh, it's really difficult to date a lot of the changes that were made to the property, uh, so.
We can ask the applicant. Okay, um. So I think that's all I've got. Anybody else have an additional question? Okay, so I'll, I'll pose that and open it up for, um, uh, public. And, um, so if we have, if we have the applicant here, uh, you can, Mr. Kinsey, uh, you, you get up to five minutes.
Thank you. Kurt? Do you want to touch it?
Yes, on the side.
Turn it green on the, on the.
There we go. I feel like I'm looking at a light in Frisbee here. My name is Kurt Anderson, I'm Principal of Anderson Architects. My office is located here in Campbell, and I've worked for the city for almost fifty years, so can see all. So here's what I find interesting about this whole situation. We talk about ownership and all these different things, and getting on the list, not being, wanting to be on the list. But here's, to me, as, as a registered architect, we have to go through a series of processes to get our projects approved, right? I can decide if the current codes, current, uh, uh, ordinances, they have approved through my plan, they get approved, goes to the building department, and it's got to be reviewed and accepted by them, and then get issued a permit. In this particular instance, my client, Glenn Kinsey, hired a registered historical architect to prepare a report. Now, said to the staff, wasn't too happy about that report, they didn't agree with it. So staff on its own volition hired another architect, Sandoval architect, and I know Marky is a very good historical architect, and they both came to the same conclusion that this should not be on the list. So I find it difficult as a, as a licensed professional, having to go through the same, when we get, when we hire consultants to tell us why we do that, we just go, well, I disagree with that, because I don't agree with you. But they have to go through a whole series of, of findings when they prepare this report to come up with a conclusion that it doesn't merit being on the list. And it's just this, I find it very interesting that this all is being kind of pushed to the side. We've got two excellent architects that are historical, saying it should not be on the list. So that, that's one thing. One thing that wasn't, uh, addressed was that when we had requested that the H P C set up a special meeting for us, so we can have five people at the H P C, so we could get a fair representation of the board instead of three people. Well, went to the meeting, two people didn't show up. So I felt that my client really did not get a fair shake at that, because we didn't have a full quorum. Yeah, we had a quorum, but we didn't have a full committee. And with five people, you lose two, you lose three, you don't really have a very good chance of potentially this thing approved, because it's, it's swing either way. Just like y'all right now, y'all are, you're short two people on, on the commission here as well. And I find when, when we're dealing with public bodies all the time, the approval process, I think it's incumbent on the community that we get a full representation of people that are going to make decisions on our projects. So based on the fact that the H P C didn't show up when they said they were going to, I really feel that their whole recommendation to not take off lists, it was really invalid. They didn't listen to the, to historical architects, and we didn't get full representation. So I feel that the, the commission, and you've got enough people to make a, a good decision, a positive decision, that I think that needs to be taken into account. But I still am just stymied by the fact that two licensed historical architects come up with the same solution, and it doesn't carry any weight after these, both my clients spent money and the city of Campbell spent, spent money on this report. But we're not paying, giving that more weight to this whole, this whole process of a decision. I find that interesting. So I just want to bring that to your, to your thought process, when you go through this thing. Now, Glenn, can you answer some of your questions about some of that work? I'm not prepared to do that, but I'm here to help in associating the process. So Glenn, you want to come up and answer some of those questions you had about when the work was done? These kind of things?
Sure.
But I'd like you to take that into account. We have two historical architects saying it shouldn't be on the list.
Okay, well, that's why we're here tonight.
Yeah, I know. And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll, if you, if you want to make a statement first, we can give you a couple of minutes.
Oh, well, I.
Or, or if you just want to take questions.
I, right now, maybe I have one question, or maybe a kind of a question, maybe for Larissa. Um, and, and not, not to, not to disagree with anything Larissa said. However, we went through the Historic Preservation Board. We went in once and, and the, the planners recommended that this, that our, our rescission request be, be approved. And they just got, worked and worked and worked, and they decided they didn't want to deal with that. They wanted to have another meeting. So they put it off for one meeting, in which they wanted to talk to the historic, the Sandoval. And, and so we went to the next month in the meeting, Sandoval was there on Zoom, and these two, um, members were able to ask him questions, and they asked him questions specifically about whether or not this property qualified for it to be historic. He, he answered them that it certainly did, they did qualify, that it should not be on the list. And they voted against that, and, um, and then made this, I don't know how they, how they actually proposed it, but they instructed Larissa to do this new program. When the new program came back, the, uh, first one, the, the planners had, had still uh, recommended that it be taken from the list. It was at the next one, when they didn't do, didn't make a decision. And then they wanted more information. But it seemed to me that the second time that it came back, as I understood from conversation with you, that the historic board, in effect, um, took you, took that ability away from you to say, to recommend that it be removed. And that seems, that was kind of missed. We had two hearings, the, the planners recommended it be removed. We went back to another, another hut, and which was done with the the folks that wanted a special report for it, and that's when they both did, they voted apparently to, to dis- disapprove of. So then I just had a question with regard to that. And if I can answer your question.
I don't know if you have anything you want to say, but I mean, it, it sounds to me like, I've been on, I've been on, uh, another commission for eight years, and I've been on this commission for four years. And I, I think what we're just doing, whether it's about the three, you know, only three voters, is that we, we follow rules. We follow the rules of how you can run a meeting and, and, and getting, getting a quorum. And then if, if the resolution has to be changed, it has to come back. It sounds to me like, uh, the planning department and the, and the commission, commission has followed the rules of how we run, how we do things here. You don't have to agree with it. And as far as their recommendation, I mean, they make, uh, the, the planners make a recommendation, and then the commissions look at that. We look at the, uh, the, the recommendation, and we can either agree or disagree with it. But the planners only can make a recommendation. It, it's not set, it's not set in law, so to speak. So that's why it comes to the commission, it comes to the council, because they are the ones that vote on it. In this case, we're voting a recommendation to the council, so it's going to go to the council ultimately. But, but when we vote on something, uh, it's, it's, it could be in favor of the planner's recommendation, or it could be against the planner's recommendation. I mean, that's, that's, that happens, okay? And so they give their, what they believe is their best recommendation. We take it in consideration, we discuss it, we ask questions, and then, and then, and then we make a decision. So it's just the process. And you may not li- have liked the process of them going out to a second consultant, but, um, that's what happens sometimes, you know? So I understand exactly where you're coming from.
True statement, though, because when that, they wanted to do the second, the second, uh, I said certainly, okay. Rob Eastwood called me and asked, he basically asked permission to do a second, have a second, a, a report done. And I said certainly, yes, it's okay. And so on October fourteenth, October fourteenth, I'm not sure the date now that I think about it, um, so Sandoval came to the house, they did their inspections, they did photos, they did questions, they went.
Yeah, and we have the report, we have the report in U.S.A. We, we have the report.
Yes.
Okay, so can, can I ask the commissioner, other commissioners, if they have questions of you?
Certainly.
Okay.
Again.
Mike?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. Mr. Kinsley, when you bought the house in nineteen ninety-five, did you, did you know it was a historic resource, uh, inventory house, a structure of merit or, or not?
I don't know how much that came up. The people who owned that property before me was an aunt and uncle, Edna Humphries and Sam Humphries.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and we bought the property from Edna Humphries after her husband died. Edna Humphries told us, and told other folks, that he, they had had a, a question from the, from the history folks, from the Campbell history group. They had done. They had done, I think they were doing a walkthrough, and it was probably the nineteen seventy-seven group. This thing came by and talked to her. And asking her about their, telling her about the historic program, and they were probably encouraging her to do that. She said, no way. She was not interested in doing anything with the historic preservation board and nor the report. And that was about the end of the conversation. That, that conversation probably came up maybe twice during the period of time from the time I was around, right, when I was rearound. But when we bought the property, it was never mentioned. And just as a couple of notes, and a couple of things, I am a, I'm a Realtor with the California Association of Realtors. I've been a Realtor since nineteen sixty-two. And so the idea that Realtors are going to do all this stuff with regard to disclosures, Realtors for several years now have been restricted from dealing with, checking with cities for permit stuff, any of that kind of information. And the Historic Preservation Board has never been mentioned in a transaction that I'm aware of. I have sold, I sold three or four properties on Sunnyside Avenue, I've sold several in the city of Campbell. The seller, seller is required by state law to develop a form and list, for instance, saying that they've done the property that, that they did without a permit. But there's no requirement that an agent investigate that. So to, to deal with deciding that the, the real estate agent involved is doing something incorrect, that's not correct.
Can I also ask why you're doing this now? I mean, do you plan renovations to the house or, or why are you going through the process now?
No, I've been out of, I've been past this door, I've been past retirement age now for some twenty years. And I have not retired as such. I'm still an active Realtor. I'm not doing any business to say, to speak of, but I'm still an active Realtor. I'm still involved with the California Association of Realtors, still involved with the San Jose, Senator County Association of Realtors. I'm eighty-eight years old. I don't expect to live a long time. But the idea that I die, or for that matter, my wife dies, and leaves us, or either her or me, as an individual, with this house to maintain and try to maintain and deal with, doesn't make any sense. I mean, it only makes sense for us to stay here and live here, hoping until one of us die unless something changes. We enjoy living here, we enjoy Campbell, we walk the streets of Campbell. And we don't have any intention of selling this property right now. The first indication I had really of that, that this historic resource in the, in the, in the industry, the historic resource thing that we were dealing with was, was referred to as of an interest property, was not, was not a historic property. The first thing that happened to me that was making me aware of that was in nineteen, I think it was nineteen, two thousand seventeen. And I had a, a customer who had actually bought two duplexes in San Jose from me. And he wanted to, he looked at our property, he wanted to make us an offer to buy it from us. And we were talking about that. And I was saying, no, I wasn't interested in the kind of numbers he was throwing out, it wasn't an interesting figure to me. And so he came to the city and, and talked to, he came down here and talked to Cindy Crawford, who was senior planner at the time. And he came back and he said, your house is on this historic list, or some historic list in the city of Campbell. And so I'm not interested in talking to you anymore about it. I don't want to buy it, I'm not interested in buying it. And so that basically ended that conversation. But since we had gotten to that point, I came to the city council, the planning desk here, and talked with Cindy Crawford, who was again, the city planner at the time, senior planner, I think was her title at the time. She was very pleasant to me. We didn't have any problems. We had a pleasant conversation. But she said to me, Glenn, you don't have anything to worry about. Your property is on an interest list. It was at the time, it was on this HRI, Historic Inventory List, which could be put on that list by anybody. And then the, the staff were, from that time forward, they were dealing with trying to entice an owner to, to recommend or, or request their property put on this list. We ever, we never did that. I never felt this property was historic enough, this was historic to speak of or to be worth saving. At some, anybody talked to me through the years if it was ever mentioned anything about historic? I'm telling them that this house is way past, past beyond dealing with being historic.
But I think, I think the question is, I think the question is, and Commissioner Craig, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The, the question is, what is your concern about, about this, getting it off the list? Is, you know, if you had said, well, we were planning to sell it and we're worried about in terms of selling, or, or we were going to make some changes. But if, if you're saying that you're, is it just, is it just a concern that you have in general about being on the list?
I think, I think I heard the answer, Commissioner, sister, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kinsey, but you're actually saying that you just want to get off the list to make it easier, future sales of the house, or maybe any work that you might do.
That's a very small amount of it. I, I don't, that's not my plan. My plan is to be able to sell the house when one of us die. We're not gonna, we're not planning on selling in the meantime.
Okay.
I lost the, lost the train of thought there.
Well, but you want to get off the historic resource inventory because, because just exactly.
The reason I want to get off the, off the inventory, off the list, is because when it becomes a historic program, the next, next thing that happens is somebody wants me to sign a contract to guarantee that I'll make sure that this house, nothing happens to it in perpetuity. And I don't think anybody knew what perpetuity meant when they, when they put that together. But that's a long time, and it's impossible to do. When you're living in God's world, man, you and I, we can't keep this thing from falling apart.
More flexibility for, for the, for the property.
No, it's beyond flexibility. I don't want to sue the country. I don't want to sue the, or have the city sue me to sell me, tell me that I have to sign this contract. And I'm not going to sign that contract. I don't believe that I need to sign that contract. I think that we've owned that, I've owned that thing since nineteen seventy-five. And it was, the question was, did we get notified? We didn't get notified. So I've been told, I have been told that everybody got a, got a certified letter sent to them with return receipt requested from the post office. I don't think there's any of those, any of the letters stood out. I don't think anybody got the notification. We didn't, we weren't getting notifications. I wasn't getting any notification of the three hundred mile thing. Until I went up and talked with the, I came in and talked to the planner. After that, I got some mail, it was back then, so.
Okay. Has anybody held any other questions? Any of the commissioners?
That was covered. No.
Now?
No.
Okay. I think we're, we're satisfied with your, your explanation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I mean, I don't want to get upset with anyone. But I don't want to have it going on as being historic.
Do I give you two minutes?
Yes, you can, as. Yes, it is open to the public. It's open to the public. That's, that's fine. You can, you can speak.
Okay. So, so.
Could you say your name?
Yeah, Keith Applegate. I'm here in Campbell. So here's what I hear, and you guys take what it's worth, but here's what I hear. There's a concern about inheritance. Okay, not that he's going to sell it, but when he's, I got kids. When it goes on to my kids, I don't want to have them worried about having a historical building. Yeah, I think we'd all understand that, number one. I live very close to the Lee House, so I understand enough of this stuff to have at least a two cent. So that's, that's the inheritance, sell it, yeah. Okay, that's that whole thing. The other thing is, I'm curious why the Historical Society said no, but yet our planning commission, which aren't experts at that, said yes. I would like to dig into that and say, what was the decision-making process? Why they would counter what the Historical Society said? And that's why I'm saying. I mean, there's got to be a reason that two different parties that are doing this, one says yes, make, take it off, and one says no.
Okay, thank you.
Doubles in the details. Sorry, guys.
Yes.
I don't know if that helps or anything, I just kind of care.
All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this? Anybody online? Okay, I'm going to close it and open it up for comments by the commissioners. Who would like to start? Commissioner Buckbinder.
I'd like to thank you everybody for coming, sharing the perspective on this. I appreciate that. I think what's going on here is that the Historic Preservation Board has a different mandate than we do. Concerned that's different mandate that the staff does, and I get the sense that they were looking for a reason to keep it on the inventory. But their perspective is, if there is some way in which this could fit into being historical, we should preserve it. As we saw in Scott's report, it's not really, it doesn't really fit into any of the categories. Turns out it was adjacent to some people who were important to the city's history. It reflects a, a style that was certainly not unique to this building, but prominent in the past. Basically, it is an old building. And that, I guess, apparently makes it historical, but that's not what the city's code says, and I think that's what the staff has told us. I think this is really underscored by the preservation board seeing that it is no longer the original house. Like it is not historically accurate to the original construction and saying, well, let's just make it more historic because the history of the city involves changing it. And that's why we can't change it any further. Which I think it's pretty straightforward. Staff has told us, like, by the city's rules, this is not a particularly historically important property. The owner doesn't want to have it preserved in any particular way. It has not been preserved in any particular way. I think this is a pretty clear-cut case of recidivism. Thank you.
What I have to say. Commissioner Buckbinder. Commissioner Craig?
Yeah, I, you know, honestly, this is, I, I look at this as really a loose, loose situation. You can't win on this one. I think we all want to preserve, preserve history. We all want to be historical preservationists. And we have a limited history, and we have an interesting history. I got, you know, I, I got into this stuff, I actually read almost everything because I just kind of got fascinated by the whole history, and there's really a lot of information here. You know, I almost look like, I almost look at this as, when we do the tree appeals, you know, we have the tree appeals. And at first, you know, we want, we want to preserve history, but we want homeowners to be able, property owners to do what they want with their property. And we get these tree appeals, and they have the trees, and they, you know, they're kind of dangerous, but they're, we're trying to save them. And, you know, what do you, you got to balance, what are you going to do? At least with the trees, though, maybe in twenty, thirty years, you've got a couple more trees and you, and you, and you went out. But with the historic structures, you know, once they're gone, they're gone. And that's really kind of the crucial thing. And I do agree with Commissioner Buckbinder, I think he had it on, on the most, you know, that Historic Preservation Board is, that's their charter, is historic preservation. So my, the question that I had the whole time I was reading our long staff report was the same one that our last speaker just had. I mean, how could they be different? And really, what, what my reading comes down to is that the Historic Preservation Board just had a, has a much lower level in their minds to where something is historic versus Mr. Sandoval. The, the ordinance, the, the resolution that was prepared for the Historic Preservation Board against, against allowing it to go, it's really good. It's really good. I hope everybody read it because it makes some great points in there. And very significant and, and, and common sense kind of points. And I think the Historic Preservation, I don't want to speak for them, but yeah, you know, I think that they're, they want to preserve history and their, their bias is a lot lower than maybe others. But kind of, you know, when you look at, at Mr. Sandoval's report, and it, you know, it ended merges with our staff report, and there, there's nothing in his report that has even a hint of historic elements to the house. I mean, nothing. He, he says, you know, the homeowners, the fitters, we're, you know, nobody's, we're not, just normal people, nobody's special. The only connection to Mr. Kennedy, who I never knew about, I read this report, very significant member of Campbell. That church, by the way, down the street is, was Mr. Kennedy's house, and I guess that's a historic structure if I read it right, but yeah, there's just, there's, I mean, the Sandoval report doesn't give a, an inch of, hey, maybe there's, you know, there's a nice cornice in the, in the kitchen that's really from. On the other hand, you know, this is a building that was built in nineteen oh five, oh six, and it says, you know, significant renovations, a lot of changes. What I'm reading through the lines there, well, there's probably elements of that house from nineteen oh five, nineteen oh six, nineteen ten. And that's, that's pretty unusual, yeah, but I think that's pretty historic. When I look at the house as a layperson, I know nothing about historic preservation. I look at the house and it's definitely unusual. And it's got some pretty interesting features. That Sunnyside, my favorite, my favorite street in Campbell is Alice Avenue, one street over, because somebody had the fourth wall way back when to really preserve the whole street for the historic. Sandoval's report, I think, what did he call it? A mishmash? For Sunnyside, it's a mishmash, and it really is. It's a real mishmash of a specific street. And it's kind of too bad, but we also have at least six or seven other historic resource inventory houses on that street. None of them have gone through this process, but I, I do think that once you approve one, you know, that kind of, in fairness, you know, every, every, every property, of course, is different, every architectural design is different, but I think that will definitely slow it away a little bit for the next person on Sunnyside that wants to, wants to do something like this. But in terms of, we're, we're trying to give our recommendation to the city council. And I'm completely torn on this thing, completely torn for the reasons I explained. But I really come back to kind of, I guess what staff did. I, I looked at Sandoval's report. I didn't look so much at the original architect's report because if he had come out with a different recommendation, we wouldn't be here because then they, or wouldn't have applied for this because that architect would have said it was historic. But Sandoval, you know, he, he, he was, you know, pretty adamant on his opinions, and they seemed very unbiased, and you know, we try to follow the science, we try to be as fair as we can, we try to be as fair and consistent as we can, and everybody thinks that's so easy to do. Boy, it's really hard. It's really hard to do. But my recommendation with the city council would be to approve the removal from the HRI just because of Sandoval's report that you said there's, there's just nothing there. Sorry to say. I hate to see it go. Thanks.
Commissioner Fields?
So on the macro point, I feel like that we shouldn't consider these in the future barring some special circumstance. It should just go straight to planning. I feel terrible. The council, thank you. I feel terrible. This gentleman is going to go to five separate meetings. For five, that is terrible from a process perspective. So I feel very, I know three of those, or two were a special circumstance, but like this, this that I just feel is anti-citizen. I really don't like that. I'd like us to figure it out. So I don't think we should do this in the future. However, since it's in front of me, I will weigh in on it. I am not torn. This felt like overreach. I, I am strongly in favor of approving this. I, I don't understand the motivation of the Historic Preservation Board on this one. This feels very clear-cut to me based on the reporting that we're seeing. And again, I feel like we're up here advocating for citizens, and I just feel bad what's happened here. So no, I'm, I'm strongly in favor of approving and candidly, I'm just, I don't know what other commentary we can include other than our votes, but this just, this feels like wrong from a process perspective, how we got to this point. So I, I, maybe we can discuss if we can include any sentiments on top of our votes because I, I got annoyed as I read this, and now I'm more annoyed as I'm hearing this nice gentleman tell his story. This just, this is frustrating me.
Thank you, Commissioner Fields. Mr. Campcar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a question for the director. The gentleman said that you called him and you let him know that you're going to get a second historic architectural firm, Sandoval, to do that. Well, my understanding is it's, the city's right to get, you know, competing or secondary. for secondary, you were a gentleman to call him. I do have a question. Do, he, he ended up paying for the second one as well, correct? This doesn't come out of the city's budget, does it?
It did. We paid for it. Yeah. So I, the situation at the time, staff had multiple questions on the first report. I believe the architect, the prepared report, perhaps was unwilling to, to look at those new things. I saw dispute brewing, coming to hearings. And I thought it was well-served to have just a second expert on the city's behalf come in, look at the totality of the record, and provide the better recommendation. So.
I see, I see. And that cost will not be passed on to him through fees or reviews or anything like that. It's actually, okay. Wonderful, you know, so, and, and so I have to agree with my colleagues. Just one point for Commissioner Craig is that there is a middle ground in the sense that it doesn't have to be either that the structure stays or gets demolished. It could be moved. But to me, it's not fair for some board or some, you know, committee to say, I want this preserved, and I'm gonna put the burden on you, the owner, you know? If it's so, if the, if a, if a group or committee is so interested in preserving it, it should come up with an act with a plan to pick that up and move it, you know, when the time comes, or, or preserve it on their own property, you know? So to me, there's, there's a, somewhere in the middle that can make both sides happy, but in this case, I have to, I have to agree with my three colleagues that two architects, two experts said, this is not historic. The, our professional staff said it's not historic, you know, and so to me, that's, that's good enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, I, I don't, normally I, I talk a lot, but
Commissioner Caesar?
Yes.
I don't know, I noticed that Commissioner Majewski is, is on the line. I don't know when she weighed in, if she came in after the
Okay.
hearing on this matter has started. She won't be able to vote on it, but she can still make comments.
Commissioner Majewski, um, did you, did you come in, in the middle of this thing?
I came in shortly after Larissa started, so I won't be making any votes, but yeah, I'm in agreement with all of you. I love architecture, I love history, I love the character of this building, but, you know, like, I'm a, I'm a professional arborist, so I've had to make reports like this in the past and have people tell me, you just hate trees. You know, this and that. You just want to remove this tree because of, you hate it, and we don't agree with you, and I, so I, I, I say that saying we should listen to the experts, and I totally agree with the architect that spoke. You know, two experts and our staff, who are very experienced, have spoken, and we should listen to them. So I'm sort of glad it came to us in this way, but it definitely seems a little a little overreaching, as Commissioner Field said. And I'm glad that Rob stated that the city's looking into how we're gonna notify residents in the future of, you know, historic status of homes to avoid this sort of situation. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so you know, I, I agree with Commissioner Fields in terms of, I think, we don't really, probably need it noted. It's been noted, and and the Planning Commission has noted that they're not happy with the process in terms of it being a redundancy, and I, I don't really disagree with that, and so hopefully we'll be able to make it more efficient in the future. I, I agree, I agree pretty much with what everybody has said. I found it interesting, it's like, I had written independent notes on this, and I had used the word mishmash on, for Sunnyside. I didn't realize it was in, it was, it was in the report, but, but I will say that having, having a second report done seems quite reasonable, considering there was apparently some, some things going on that we, we don't know about, and that it seems quite reasonable to have an independent report done by the city. So I, I don't have a real problem with that. It it stretches out the, it stretches out the issue a little bit, but, but, you know, we, a lot of times we get reports in by the applicant, by a consultant, and it's like, do we the question is, do we, should we always trust the private report that comes from the applicant? Who has hired a consultant? So I like the idea of independent consultants being being brought in, the city pays for it, and are well and good. Certainly, the applicant shouldn't be paying for that, but I, you know, yet, we, we are quite aware of the conflict here. The, the, as, as, somebody noted, it's like, okay, how can there be this on one side, you know? Well, that's the way it works sometimes, but not often. There's more agreement than disagreement, but I was concerned about the fact that the Historic Preservation Board had unanimously opposed the decision because they're supposed to have been the city experts. But I, I think Commissioner Craig made a good point about this is, their bar is different, and, you know, when you think about it, it's like, these things were picked 50 years ago. Almost 50 years ago. Most of these properties were, were picked by some people in the city who did this, you know, decades and decades ago, before any of us were around, and they had a criteria at that time that said, oh, all these little cottages on Sunnyside and, you know, around downtown should be historical. Maybe it seemed reasonable at the time. I've been by, the last two days I've been by the site twice, and the second time I drove by, down, up and down the street. I also looked on the listings. There's five other listings on Sunnyside, I believe. I think most of them are the same kind of Queen Anne Cottage look. And, and a couple of them are even much more basic than this one. They're really small in what I would consider unsubstantial, you know, in terms of, of the look and feel of it being historical site. And, and although this one has got a little bit more to it, it's, it's, I looked up what Queen Anne cottages are, look like in, in other places in terms of historical historical sites in, in Alameda and Canola and a couple other Bay Area cities, and they're these much more elegant-looking, bigger, elegant-looking, almost Victorian, I mean, they're, they're kind of a subset of a Victorian, or kind of a derivation of Victorian, and they were much more substantial and had, you know, all the elements that you're supposed to have in a supposed Queen Anne cottage, which includes a a wraparound front area and, 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 you know, all kinds of elegant facade elements. So so to me, it's not, you know, as a layman, when I look at it, with a little bit of study of, of the architecture, that it, it doesn't, it doesn't really, at this point in time, seem like this, and for that matter, probably others on the list are of as, as, as much historic significance as, as they, maybe were thought to be. But it seems to me that there's almost none of the elements that it fits. It doesn't, the only one that seems to be that the Historic Preservation Board held on to was the architectural elements. They basically seemed to not, they seemed to agree that there wasn't really much of a, of a connection in terms of family history, that kind of thing, but that they were, it was, it still had a architectural historical significance, and I, I'm not sure that that still applies, especially with all the things that have been changed, and that it is not, in my personal estimation, a, a great example of a of a, of a historical home. So I, I don't really see, you know, adding to it, like others said, that we have two separate studies that agree with, with that contention. I, I think that I, I'm in full agreement with the fact that we, we should approve this recommendation for a decision to go, go to the council. So with that said, I'll take a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion that the Campbell Planning Commission recommend that the Campbell City Council approve the request of Glenn Kinsey to remove a structural merit from the Historic Resource Inventory, commonly known as the Emile and Mae Fritz House, a property located at 67 Sunnyside Avenue, PLN 2023-170. Second.
You got a second? You got a motion and a second? We have a vote? Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski abstain? Commissioner Craig?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Campcar?
Aye.
Commissioner Caesar? Aye. But it passes unanimously. We appreciate your
Oh, turn your frisbee off.
patience. We appreciate your patience. And
Thank you very much.
Good night. Thank you. Report by the Community Development Director?
I do.
Starting at age 20, too.
Yes, so that means I can stretch this out for an hour. Thank you for attending.
Thank you, guys, and gals.
Okay, last Tuesday at council was a bit busy. I'll put on some of the actions you may or may not have heard of. The council did approve an extension of time on conditional use permit for conversion from residential office on Parsons. That's a major interest. This didn't come to the planning commission, but might be of interest. The council approved an air quality ordinance. So two years ago, as part of the building code adoption, we adopted REACH codes to encourage or require electrifications in new buildings. There was a lawsuit against Berkeley. You might have heard about this. A lot of the REACH codes regionally have been set aside, including Campbell's. Campbell took a different approach of looking at the nit, on the, on the nitrous oxide, might have that off a bit. The NO2 emissions that happen when you burn gas in the home, either from cooking or hot water heaters, and simulated a bit the grounds back mid-used to require in 2027 and on for the appliances that burn natural gas cannot be used. So on, on those premises and multitude of studies that show indoor air quality, cooking on natural gas stoves causes issues and causes air quality community health benefits. Couple months back, we presented some options for council. Is this an option that we should look at to replace the REACH code? Council was favorable. We brought that ordinance to council last Tuesday. They did approve it. Campbell is the second, I think, jurisdiction in this county that's taken that approach. And happy to answer more questions on that. Probably of most interest to the planning commission, council did approve the inclusionary housing ordinance that was presented to you roughly two weeks ago, and the commercial linkage fee. Council did approve staff's recommendation, recommended approach on inclusionary housing ordinance that did include the new rounding provisions, and it did include decreasing the threshold from 10 to 5. Happy to entertain any questions on that. No, the planning commission did not again, recommend on both those items. Last but not least, there was a bit of a study session feedback on a branding strategy related to our economic development plan, to which we provide some feedback. And last but not least, we're looking ahead to your next planning commission meeting on September 10th. There are no items on the horizon, so absent some emergency coming on our plate, we're set to actually cancel that meeting. I believe there is a SARC item, to review on SARC, but no planning commission. And on that, happy to answer any questions.
So that affects gas stoves, but not necessarily gas water heaters and furnaces?
All the above.
All the, okay, so.
And to be clear, this is in new, new homes, new buildings, and I always call them rebuilds, or you remodel your building to the extent that the building department says it's effectively a new building.
Okay, so it's not, buildings that currently have those will have to get them changed out?
Right. If you were just doing a remodel of your kitchen, and you said, hey, I'd like to put a gas stove in, or you can, you can do so.
That was, that was the way the previous, the state law that was gonna eliminate was all future stuff anyway, right?
Yes, I mean, separately, back mid has new regulations, I think, non-stoves, that you can't buy gas water heaters and HVAC after 2027 and 2029. The, the air quality ordinance passed by council pretty much simulates the same rules that were in effect under our REACH codes before, same thresholds, same requirements. Again, only new buildings and rebuilt buildings.
So the REACH code, so the REACH code, lawsuit in Berkeley sort of reversed it, and so you're saying with the air quality, everything's back on, that the REACH code was trying to achieve? Basically, is that what you're saying? 2027, I know, it would be the same, right?
If you were building a new house in Campbell, effectively, the requirements are the same as they were. City took a different approach of requiring that, but effectively, as a home builder or developer be faced with generally the same standards as
On the inclusionary house, I'm sorry, I didn't watch, did you mind giving a brief summary of what was council's rationale for? Like, did you discuss that much, or any, maybe keynotes on how their deliberation was different than our deliberation?
Yeah, and if it helps, I'll offer my professional opinion. Yeah, there was a fair amount of deliberate deliberation and a clear presentation. We had, where the planning commission landed on this. I'll say one, at least one council member had a lot of questions and hesitation. I can't remember the exact vote, ongoing below 10. I think at the end of the day, some of the factors were, as you might have, I can't remember if this was news, when you had considered it, the, the regional bonds that was gonna be put on the ballot for affordable housing by BOTA had been taken off, and that might have been a factor on less affordable housing funding just in general, not being available. So the council's more serious at looking, and this was put in the record, at opportunities to create funds into our affordable housing program. I'll say this, the, the process with council was much more deliberative than with the planning commission. We had gone to council about a month or two prior and, and laid out a lot of options for them to look at. One was not doing any changes, one was a mid-level, and council, you know, had looked at those, weighed in, had a lot of discussion, and weighed in initially on these policy options. So there was a lot of socialization before of, of these, and I'll say my professional opinion, I think it's a bit on staff, as we brought this ordinance to you without that background. And it was, I know at least heard from one or two planning commissioners, trying to disseminate, digest and understand a hundred-page nexus study and all those elements at once was a bit more difficult.
Thank you.
So if I'm not mistaken, the vote was four to one, right? The council member, Vice Mayor Lopez did not vote for it. Now, I had read a, an article in San Jose Spotlight that talked about the planning commissioner's vote. And the reporter said, talked to you, and you said, last year, you had four of these projects. That's what the court said. So the past year, there were, we had four projects between five and nine. So, so this whole fight was about four units? Because four to five would create, let's say, one extra unit, and if you had only four of those projects, we were fighting over four units? Is that, you know?
It's more about the in-Luffy, aren't we talking about, really just more about the in-Luffy?
Well, it's the in-Luffy for four units, though. I mean, the total that would have been created, if there were four applicants.
Yeah, I understand.
And they wanted to do between five and nine, and we lowered the threshold from 10 to 5, that creates one unit for each of those four units. Four units total, whether in-Luffy or you created.
The only other add is, was both the, and yeah, the last calendar year, the number of projects was four. That's actually correct. Staff recommendation was both to drop it to that threshold, and also rounding. I think a lot of the fiscal analysis we had was that the rounding provision would bring in a fair amount of, of funds for the affordable housing program.
But, but just to be clear, you know, we just approved this six-unit thing on Sunnyside a few months ago, right? Six units. Okay, it took two little parcels, and they, they're putting up six units, and we, we approved it this last year, right? So if this thing was in effect, and they weren't gonna do any and they weren't going to do any, um, affordable housing, they just wanted six market housing, they would now have to pay an in-lufy for one, basically one.
Or point.
They paid for the fraction, which I think is point nine.
Right. Yes. But, uh, so that's, that's the difference. It's like, uh, something like that, they're gonna have to.
But that's after one year, you know, after one year, right?
Whenever, whenever it kicks in, it's like they're gonna pay.
It kicks in in one year, correct?
Right. But that, that's what.
Right. It would, it would be created in lufy for point nine unit, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, anybody else? Any questions? Uh, adjourn the meeting. Till, uh,
See you, Cory.
Till, till September tenth or September twenty-fourth, depending.
Oh.